Okay, welcome everyone. We shall now begin the meeting. I don't have a gavel with me, but this is the a regular session of Bloomington Common Council for Wednesday, the 18th of November, 2020. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Rallo.
Time to unmute. You have no sound, Mr. Rallo?
Perhaps he is still muted by the host?
Yes, I was just unmuted by the host.
I see, okay.
And I'm here.
Scambaluri?
Here.
Rosenbarker?
Here.
Sims?
Here.
Volin?
Here.
Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Flaherty?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Sandberg?
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum, in fact, all of present and accounted for. Here is a summation of tonight's agenda. We'll be hearing approval of several sets of minutes. We'll be hearing reports, a maximum of 20 minutes set aside for each portion of reports, reports from council members. Well, actually, I take it back. We're going to be allocating significant amount of time to a report from the mayor and city offices, presentation of the draft final master plan for the hospital site redevelopment, reports from council committees, and then 20 minutes for reports from the public. We'll then go to appointments to boards and commissions, and then we'll hear the following items of legislation for second reading and resolutions. Ordinance 2031 to amend Title II of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Administration and Personnel, inserting Chapter 2.35, establishing the Department of Engineering, and amending Chapter 2.14, titled Planning and Transportation Department. Resolution 2017, authorizing the allocation of the Jack Hopkins Social Services Recover Forward Funding Cycle Funds for the year 2020 and related matters. And Ordinance 2020 to amend Title II Administration and Personnel of the Bloomington Municipal Code to establish a Community Advisory and Public Safety Commission. And then, under legislation for first reading, Ordinance 2029 to amend Title I, general provisions of the Bloomington Municipal Code regarding amending Chapter 1.08 to harmonize the design of the city logo and city seal. Additional public comment will follow that, followed by matters of council schedule, and then adjournment, and then the regular session will be followed immediately by a meeting of the administration committee, which will take up ordinance 2029. Again, tonight's committee meetings were advertised last year as part of the schedule in anticipation of Thanksgiving week. So with that, we will go now to approval of minutes, Madam Parliamentarian.
Yes, thank you. I move approval of the following sets of minutes, December 4th, 2019, January 8th, February 5th, and February 20th of 2020.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion of the minutes for approval? Seeing none, we can have a roll call vote on the motion to approve those four sets of minutes.
Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rosenbarker?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
And those minutes are approved. We now go to reports from council members. I will start with the Councilmember Flaherty.
No report this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rallo?
Yeah, well, just to say that I think that we should double down on our efforts to be safe since the number of COVID cases is increasing dramatically. In fact, I was just doing a little arithmetic, and new cases seem to be growing in Indiana exponentially with a doubling time of about a week. So that means that three weeks ago, there were 10,000 cases per week. And last week, there was, the week after that, there were 20,000. This past week, there were 40,000, or soon to be 80,000 per week, probably. So it's growing dramatically, and we need to be careful and wear masks, social distance, and take all the precautions we did in the spring to try to curb the transmission. That's all I have to say, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosenbarger?
No report, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I just wanted to announce that my monthly meeting for the month of November is going to be pushed back because normally I meet on the last Saturday of the month, but due to Thanksgiving, it has been postponed to December 5th, the first Saturday in December, from 11 to 12:30 this time, giving it an hour and a half. And anybody who would like to join and talk about city issues can find the link on my Facebook page, Piedmont Smith for City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
I have no report, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandberg?
No report. I will echo Councilmember Rallo's comments about the pandemic and remaining safe. A number of us, I'm sure I'm not the only one, have gotten a couple of emails lately saying, please don't make masks mandatory, make them voluntary. And to those constituents, I, you know, I respect everyone's opinions and everyone who feels strongly enough to contact us, but that is just something I cannot get behind. Wearing a mask is the very, very least we can do as our numbers are spiking, as the cold weather is coming and we're indoors more. And I would urge our administration and the entire county of Monroe to again, be a lot more strict with our regulations. This is, this is life and death for people. And anyone that thinks that this is just like the flu, it is not. So again, thank you for raising that concern, especially as we all approach the holidays. I'm sure we'd all love to be with family, but we're going to have to find ways to work around that this year. Thank you.
Thanks for that report. Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. I'd like to echo and piggyback on what my two colleagues just stated. I'm sure I'm shared with some of you that we lost a family member to COVID. He lived in Evansville during this pandemic. And family means different things to many different people, but I'm quite sure they're all near and dear. We, just yesterday, canceled all, it wasn't very likely anyway, but we've canceled all travel plans to get together for this holiday. I have family in Illinois, in Kentucky. We had some coming, was going to fly in from Utah. And as we all know, and what's just been stated, we just simply cannot afford to gather in that manner anymore, at least for a while, and we have to be overly, overly cautious. So I would just echo the sentiments of my two previous colleagues and wish everyone good health and stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Scambaluri?
I have no report this evening, thank you.
Thank you. I think that my colleagues have spoken eloquently on the topic of COVID. We have just surpassed today 250,000 deaths in this country due to it, and cases are spiking once again, greater than the previous lockdown. So I think that canceling travel plans is a good idea. I've just canceled mine. I also want to say a word of all the years, of all the years for IU's football team to get really good, they had to pick this year. And whether they're in, I mean, even though they may not be playing in Bloomington, if IU beats Ohio State this weekend, the potential for super-spreader events due to celebration is great. And so at the very least, I know how excited you may be if IU wins. Whether, wherever you're celebrating, please at least wear a mask and try to keep your distance from people. So otherwise, go IU, fight, fight, fight. That's it for reports from council members. We now go to the mayor and city offices, and we're going to have a presentation on the draft master plan for the hospital site. I see Mayor Hamilton, his bright shiny face here. Mr. Mayor, will you introduce this presentation? By the way, this is going to be a 45-minute presentation, and I have allocated 45 minutes for questions and answers. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to have you begin.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Just very briefly, I do want to echo what was said about COVID. I haven't had, I haven't spoken in front of you for a little while, but indeed, we are in very difficult days. I want to thank the partners who have worked with us since the spring in our county to do the right things and to be more controlling than the state or the country have been that has helped us. We are in a better position than the state, but we are still deteriorating in this county as well, in our community. We've had seven employee cases in the past several days. These are dangerous months ahead. As mentioned, just for example, the state daily case average is up sixfold in the last six weeks and is not pointed downward at all. So stay tuned, we'll be continuing to talk about next steps for that, but I echo and affirm all that has been said tonight. For tonight, and I'll hand it over to Senator Vi Simpson shortly for very brief introductions as well. Just want to, as you noted, we're focusing on the hospital reuse, the draft final master plan. I want to thank the team that has worked so hard on that from Skidmore Owens Merrill and many other partners inside the city government and more than 500 members of the public for months of feedback. And I'll just in advance thank the council. You've had members, including particularly Isabel Piedmont Smith and Jim Sims, on the steering and oversight committees, as well as Kate Rosenbarger and Matt Flaherty helping out in the selection process. Thank you for your work, and thank you tonight for your attention, reactions, feedback to this. It's an ongoing process, but I welcome your advice and feedback and reactions for this once-in-a-century, very exciting project. And let me hand it over to co-chair of the steering committee, Senator Vi Simpson, who's done spectacular work helping steer this for years. And Vi, I'll hand it to you, and then we'll hand it over to the presenters. Thanks so much.
Thanks, Mayor. And I just want to reiterate my thanks to the members of the common council for giving us this opportunity to talk to you tonight and to show you some of the work that's been done. We've been, many of us have been working on this issue for five, going on six years now. And, and we have had ups and downs and sideways motions as we've been working on it. But it's getting to the point now where it's very exciting. We have, we have, we're very close now to the culmination of all of that work. And I really want to take this opportunity to thank the hundreds of people who have worked, not only those who have served past and present on the hospital reuse committee, but also the hundreds of people who have taken advantage of the opportunities for public input through public forums and through written comments. We have collected all of that information, and what you're going to see tonight is really a polished draft. It's not the final, but it is, it's a draft still of the, of our planning framework for going forward. And I hope that you're as excited as we are to, to see it. It's, we've come a long way, and we have a long way to go. This is a long-term project, years and years in the past and going forward. So we're anxious to hear your comments and answer any questions that you might have. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mick, who's going to introduce the, the planning personnel.
Thank you, Senator Simpson and Mayor Hamilton. Mick Renaisen, deputy mayor. I serve as the city's project lead on the project review committee. And I thought I would start by sharing with you a little bit of where we've been in the last five years so that you have some context for what you're about to see from our planning consulting team, Skidmore Owens and Merrill. So just a refresher, city, the city entered into a purchase agreement with IU Health back in May of 2018 to acquire the 24 acres that you see on this slide outlined in yellow, not the dotted line, but the hard line in yellow. That agreement took several years to negotiate and concluded that, again, in May of 2018. The entire area that is currently zoned medical in this area is close to 70 acres, and you can see that with the additional dotted line. I know it's a little out of scale, but there's actually 70 acres in total that are zoned medical in this area. I think the community is now well aware that IU Health will be moving to their new site, their beautiful new half a billion dollar investment on the east side of our community sometime in late 2021. And as is part of the purchase agreement, it states that the city will receive a clear and remediated site when the transfer of property occurs for the main site. And that main site is where the main hospital exists, all the sort of middle block between the dash lines to the west and the block east of Rogers is a different parcel that does not require the, the IU Health folks to remediate that site. The city has the option to keep two structures on the site per our agreement. One of those is the parking structure, and the other is the core building. And to date, the city has opted to keep the parking structure, and we have until the end of December to make a decision on the core building. And note that we anticipate taking a recommendation on the core building to the redevelopment commission, which is the owner of the site in December for their consideration. Throughout this process, starting back in 2015, as Senator Simpson said, a 30-plus member hospital reuse committee consisting of local residents from all walks of life have helped steer the project forward. And as I've told, co-chair Simpson, you're not done after this. It'll take years ahead for your group to continue to help shepherd the project forward. So on the next slide, I wanted to outline a little bit about what the timeline is and some of the steps that have been taking place and what's coming forward. So with the assistance of that big hospital reuse committee, the city has selected a master planning team. That's the Skidmore Owens and Merrill Group back in January. Together, we've conducted stakeholder and small group interviews that occurred in May and early June. The first public forum was held on June 16th, and mind you, it was held in the format that we're all getting used to over the last nine months on Zoom. And we had 200 participants in that first forum. And that forum asked the participants what they would like to see on the site as it redeveloped. So it was really wide open at the very beginning stages back in June. At the second public forum, which was held on August 6th, there were still more than 100 in attendance. This forum focused on economic conditions and the early conceptual design options reflecting feedback from Form 1 and input from approximately 300 survey respondents between those two forums. The third public forum occurred on October 6th. There were 74 folks that attended that meeting. At the meeting, we shared the final, or I'm sorry, the refined plan based on the comments from those received throughout the previous two forums and the surveys that were part of that process. Since that third forum, SOM has refined the draft master plan to reflect, reflect the scale of the proposed redevelopment rather than the character of the redevelopment opportunity. So after tonight, between now and the end of the process, which we think will be by the end of the year, the final opportunity to comment will be after we post tonight's presentation, the full recording of the presentation, as well as just the PowerPoint that everyone's about to see on our website, BloomingtonHospitalSite.com. That's all, one word, BloomingtonHospitalSite.com, where you can not only find tonight's presentation, but all the other information leading up to tonight. There's a form, a Google form, that folks can fill out after this evening's presentation and share your comments on that Google form, and those will be considered, and we'll take them all the way through November 29th. And I'll repeat this at the end for those that might be joining later. And just again, if you have any questions or suggestions, if you go to BloomingtonHospitalSite.com, there's a wealth of information there that have informed the hospital reuse committee all along. So if you'll go to the next slide, Rachel, I'll just conclude by saying the draft master plan being presented tonight builds on past planning efforts, including the Urban Land Institute Report that was commissioned back in 2018. That's the report on the right side of this slide, and the city's 2018 comprehensive plan. And in addition, the current UDO mapping process that is currently underway. So all of these planning efforts are, are part of the discussion and will be part of the decision-making process moving forward. And you can see on this slide, I won't read them to you, some of the goals that were identified for the site by the community during that part of the planning process. I think it's important to note that a master plan develops concepts and a framework for development. Rather than a master plan, what it doesn't do is not create an architecturally designed building that will ultimately be built on the site. That comes later, as the site becomes available for development. And while the main hospital site will not be available until probably early 2023, after the demolition and remediation is completed, some of the areas outside of the main site may be available later in 2021. Also, we'll just reiterate that for, for all future steps after this master plan is completed, the public will continue to have input as those development projects come forward. And we'll talk about that at the end of the presentation. So now I'd like to turn it over to Rachel Mominy from SOM to lead us through the next part of the presentation. Rachel?
I'm muted. Sorry, I was muted. Hi, everyone, and thank you, Mick, for the introduction. As Mick mentioned, we've been on board since April of 2020 when this process began. And from the very beginning, we sought input from the community with the help of our consultants, Core, as well as Mary Kropinski, who is local to the community, to gather valuable input from various community stakeholders on how to move this project forward. And being that we are in different times, we had to do community engagement not like we normally would, which would be in person. And so we've been able to utilize Zoom. And as you can see on, on the right there, sort of Bloomington bunch, all in blue there as we've come to be known through this process. But we've been able to utilize these platforms along with surveys, the website that you can see on the top right of the page to gather that input. And since then, we've been working to translate that input into a comprehensive master plan, as well as guidelines for this 24-acre project site. We're also working now in tandem to translate this vision into potential zoning updates for, for later approval by the city plan commission and common council. So throughout this process, we have gathered over 539 unique touchpoints from the Bloomington community. So this has come in the form of one-on-one interviews done by Core, as well as Mary Kropinski and the community. And these then have been on a wide range of topics to gather important and valuable information to inform this process. We've also met with a variety of community associations, the neighboring neighborhood associations, McDoll Gardens and Prospect Hill. And we've also had, as Mick has mentioned, these three public forums leading up to today. So in that way, we've been able to gather a lot of valuable input to put towards what you'll see during today's presentation. During our last public forum, we were able to get more interactive in getting live sort of polling from the audience, as well as kind of working in a more sort of workshop fashion with you all. And in each of these public forum meetings, we've gathered the information from the transcript, from the chat features, from taking screenshots of work that we've done during these meetings just to make sure that we are hearing what you have said throughout this whole process. And one of the key questions really early on was, how do we translate the values of Bloomington and the city goals for the future of this site and apply them to the planning process? And so what we've come up with are the, what we've been calling planning principles that really have captured ideas from the past planning efforts that Mick went through with the comprehensive plan and the ULI study, as well as community input from this effort to kind of boil down to what you see here with these nine different principles that range from sort of highest and best use, diversity of housing types and mixes of uses. Really, we heard activation is important, but maybe not in the form of retail, but maybe those come in the form of community amenities and new hubs for the community that will really kind of strengthen the connections between people and the place. And in addition, we focused a lot really on the public realm and how we would create a people-first, a street design, creating a well-scaled network of spaces and well-scaled blocks, and ultimately came up with what we're calling a flexible framework for future development. So thinking about the fact that, you know, as Mick said, we're not, you know, designing the architecture that goes there, but really kind of creating the framework and the kit of parts for this future success of the site, making sure that we're enveloping everything that we've heard from the community to date. And so we'll bring you through some of those planning framework ideas. And so if we could just take a minute to kind of scale back to the more sort of regional sort of area, we found these diagrams to be really helpful in, in kind of understanding the importance of this site in the relationship to both downtown university and these other really important developments taking place along the B-line. We've heard it been called this sort of Bloomington string of pearls, and we're noting that the hospital site is really an important key feature along that string of pearls, as it's been called. We also see the site as sort of a next link in expanding the sort of network of both sort of cyclists and pedestrian trails within the area. We see this having the ability to connect to the larger park system from the university and the sort of assets downtown. And then down west and south to both the Twin Lakes Park, as well as Switchyard to the south, and then between RCA and Wapone Parks. So really a key link in the overall community and hoping that this could become a new sort of center of gravity that will kind of enhance quality of life for everyone in, in the surrounding area and really filling an void in the sort of neighborhood fabric that exists today. So here, we're looking once again at the study area, and Mick had shown this earlier, kind of a smaller version. But just to reiterate, the site to be redeveloped is the 24-acre hospital site shown in the solid yellow line. And in addition to the area to be, or the additional acres to be rezoned, is shown in the dash yellow line. And that's to the west. And just to orient you all, this image is facing south. And so north is to the bottom right of the page. And you can see the B-line along the eastern side of the development, which is on the left side of this page, and Second Street all along here with Building Trades Park. So the existing site, the, the hospital, as well as the parking garage, which, as Mick said, will remain, the core building to potentially remain. But this is kind of how we'll be looking at the site moving through the next series of slides. But just quickly to kind of look at some of those existing sort of characteristics of the site, we had the opportunity to do a couple of walking tours early on. And then, again, more recently, so you can see the, the fall coloring in those photos there. But we think it's very helpful and important to really understand the diversity and unique edges, as well as the sort of existing scale that exists there today. And so we can see in the upper-left image really how sort of tall the actual existing hospital building is today. And so that kind of gives us a sense of the opportunity that exists along Second Street for some of that height. And then in contrast, on the bottom left of the page, we can see some of that smaller, more fine-grained fabric to the south in the McDoll Garden neighborhood. And then on the top right, looking at existing amenities, the B-line is just an amazing asset to have adjacent to this site in terms of connectivity to the larger area, as well as the sort of historic context and fabric that we have on the site today, like the core administrative building. So there are a lot of great opportunities to work with on this site. And so what we'll do is we'll walk through a series of updated diagrams. You all, whoever attended the Form 3 saw a similar series of diagrams, which we've since improved upon with your input. So these will show up, show a buildup of the master plan concept or framework as we've been referring to it in these conversations. The view is similar to the bird's eye view that we just were looking at. North is to the bottom right of the page, and this will be towards downtown. Here, along the east side of the development is the B-line with the Kroger in that parking lot. Along the north side is Second Street as well as Building Trades Park. And in the red coloration, these are the buildings on the hospital site to be demolished by IU Health. And then the surrounding yellow buildings are the additional buildings on site that will also be demolished by the city in the near future. So one of the aspects of the site is the great amount of topography that happens and that this hospital today is very much on a hill. And we've seen in the future that there'll probably be the need to regrade the site to some extent to create accessibility on the new series of roads and connections to take place through the site. So there will be some amount of cut and fill to take place, and this will be further designed as the project moves forward. But one of the opportunities that we mentioned in the past is Second Street corridor coming through adjacent to the site. We see this as being the sort of active community corridor and the ability to create an active edge bordering the Prospect Hill neighborhood today. And regrading the site will be done in coordination with the improvement of existing streets today, like Second Street that we just showed you, as well as First Street, which will be happening in the coming years. Along with the creation of new streets, which will really help to create a new series of complete streets to connect the Prospect Hill and McDoll Garden neighborhoods. And so some of those new streets will be an extension of Fairview Street connecting McDoll McDoll Gardens to Building Trades Park. Jackson Street from Wiley Street into the site. We have proposed improvements for Rogers Street. And then another new street would be shifting Madison Street such that it aligns with the existing Madison Street in Prospect Hill neighborhood. So these series of streets we see as neighborhood connectors, really restitching this sort of mega block that the hospital site is today, back into the neighborhood fabric. In addition to the north-south connections, we looked at extending a greenway from the B-line west terminating towards the existing Hunter School today. And the greenway space, I mean, we've talked about it from the beginning and I've gained a lot of input from the public on this aspect. We see it as a space for new public amenities as well as important stormwater feature. But it will also be paired with a new sort of slow-traffic street, which will provide important access to each of the development parcels and to the interior of the site. So we see it as being a people's street first, or people-first street, pardon me, and a great new amenity for this future development. And by making these necessary connections with the streets and the internal greenways coming through, we create a series of 10 well-scaled blocks for flexible development in the future. And you can see the notation here that these blocks are about 340 feet by 320 feet and are very similar to the scale of the existing Prospect Hill neighborhood fabric today. So this flexible framework that we've created, we see as being able to support a range of densities as well as a range of housing types. And so as you can see on the key to the left of the page, smaller-scale, single-family homes, we see those as potential to be adjacent to that fine-grained fabric of the McDoll Garden neighborhood. Stepping up in density then to townhome model or fourplexes to increase the density a little bit up to low-rise apartments. And then up to more mid-rise multifamily apartments adjacent to the existing parking garage amenity as well as along that active community corridor of Second Street. So we see this as the opportunity to provide more height as well as that mix of uses. So what we've come up with is sort of a very diverse and varying range of housing types that could be flexibly arranged in many different ways throughout the development. And we really reflected on the housing study that was done in Bloomington and the need for the additional, I think, 2,500 some units of housing that will be needed to support the projected population growth. And we worked with SB Friedman, marketing consultant, to really estimate how many units could this site potentially hold? And they determined that the the 24 acres with the additional 52, so the 76 acres total could support about 660 to 1,000 units ranging in affordability over the next 10 years. And so looking at sort of what we've come up with in terms of design here today, we know that this site could support upwards of 800 units. So one of the things that we heard from many residents in the community, along with the importance of housing and housing that is affordable, was the importance of activation and community amenities and not just retail within the ground floor of these buildings to really support that walkable, inclusive neighborhood that is so desired. So to the left here is just some of the many possibilities for uses within the community. And this is a list that has been added to throughout the community meetings. And so we heard a lot of good input as to potential uses during Form 3. And again, these are just possibilities. Final uses for the site for activating the ground floors would ultimately be part of a development proposal for each of these specific parcels. But some of the things that we heard were daycares, both for adults and childcare. The idea of sort of many ages all existing in one place, this notion of livability and multi-generational living came up. A variety of uses, not just restaurants, but things like shared kitchens and cafes, maker spaces and shared shared workspaces, just a variety of things. But these have all been documented and can be referred to as the actual developments come to fruition. And then I just have a series of illustrative views of the massing. So this is again from the same view where downtown is facing or downtown is this way, north is facing to the bottom right of the page. But just to show the sort of scale of the development and that sort of stepping up in nature from the south to the north. And just kind of zooming in again to see this sort of diverse sort of fabric within the development and the potential that exists there today. And then a view from the south looking towards downtown with, again, this nature of small, fine-grained, potentially single-family detached homes, the possibility for townhomes, some sort of attached model around courtyard. Stepping up to denser models like potentially fourplexes or lower-scale lower-scale multifamily up to more mixed-use multifamily models, especially surrounding the parking garage, which is such an asset for the site today. And now I will pass it over to my colleague Chris Merritt from Merritt Chase to bring you through the public realm framework that was created through this process.
Great. Thanks, Rachel, and hello, everyone. It's a real pleasure to be talking to you about this real incredible opportunity in front of you tonight. As Rachel mentioned, I'm going to talk through a little bit of the public realm framework that we developed for the master plan. Starting as Rachel talked a little bit about with the street network, as shown in blue here, the blue is representing existing but improved streets. And then the brown, the primarily north-south streets are new streets. And then in the east-west direction, you can see that dashed line. That's this idea about this shared flush street condition that I'll talk a little bit about in more detail. And when we talk about streets, we're really talking about complete streets. These are streets that really put people first. They prioritize people over cars, pedestrian, public realm space, as well as green infrastructure furnishings, lighting and in space for active ground floor uses in buildings to really spill out into the street. And so as we look at the opportunities around the development and within the master plan, looking at Second Street first, here looking east with the garage on the right, challenges of fast-moving traffic, multiple turn lanes and poor pedestrian experience and safety concerns for pedestrians and cyclists. And so our proposed typical street section for Second Street, the existing on the left and the proposed on the right, you can see, we're suggesting a bit of a road diet with two 10-foot travel lanes in either direction with parallel parking on the south side, the development side, with an over 20-foot kind of streetscape section before the development line. And then along Building Trades Park, we're introducing a new 10-foot two-way bike path that would connect the B-line all the way over to Walker Street where it would connect into an existing bike path and then an enhanced Building Trades Park edge on that side of the development. For First Street, we know that this is a project in the works and we're aligning our vision with that project. Challenges here, this is right at the core building on the left, lack of sidewalks or narrow sidewalk, so safety concerns for cyclists and pedestrians. Proposed condition is to road diet and the street slightly provide parallel parking on each side and then proper tree planting and sidewalk space throughout. Rogers Street looking north, similarly, poor pedestrian experience and safety concerns, introducing bike lanes on either side as well as improved sidewalk and streetscape planting. And then a typical street section for those new north-south streets, Fairview, Jackson and Madison, a 10-foot shared travel lane, bikes and cars, parallel parking on either side, and then a tree line planting buffer with sidewalks on either side. And so it's with that kind of framework that we've developed this draft final master plan. And so, you know, we really started to think about this plan and the development opportunity here with landscape and public space first, and that kind of setting the framework for development to fill in within. And so throughout the greenway and that active building corners and intersections, we're introducing a series of public plazas. And then linking that together is this notion of these wetland gardens that came about through a public process and kind of weaving the whole development together through a series of connected green spaces that bring Building Trades Park through this new east-west greenway to the B-line. And that all also functions for stormwater. So the aim of the master plan is really to collect and retain all the stormwater on site. And so that's done through a series of these wetland gardens as well as bio swales along the edges of the streetscape. And so just to show you a little bit, an enlargement of that east-west greenway flush street condition, starting on the west where Fairview Street would connect Building Trades Park down through an improved intersection to the highest point in the development that we've suggested in a community overlook could be there, looking out over water, moving through a series of wetland gardens to a more community and a stage area at Rogers Street. Again, moving through a wetland garden over boardwalks and planting and water feature areas through a plaza framed by a tree grove and lawn, and then a new kind of public plaza and expanded gateway at the B-line itself. And just some character images of each of those spaces. So this is, you know, what some of those public plazas could look like. This is really the social heart and hub of the development. And then in between those, you have these expanded gardens where it's a little more lush and intimately human scaled. Following that, the stormwater features that could either be more kind of natural or a little bit more designed water feature-like. The courtyard spaces, a little more amenity space that could have play elements, spaces to gather, potentially grow your own food. And then this shared street, a really, you know, important element of this plan, a space where cars, pedestrians, cyclists, you know, really share the street and, you know, this could be used for cars to access on a day-to-day basis, but it's really meant to be a kind of slow speed condition where pedestrians can feel kind of safe to cross the street. And you could actually close the street for events. And so this is an example of what that could look like, kind of everyday, day-to-day condition. So this is as if you were hovering right above this street in the greenway, kind of looking east. So you're seeing Jackson Street and Rogers Street coming through there. So you see this flush street condition with bollards and lighting and street trees on either side. And then these wetland gardens that kind of bring you through the greenway. And you see that mixing of cars and cyclists and pedestrians across the space. And then, you know, you have this opportunity to close that street and really activate it with community programming, bringing kind of festivals and art and stages and performances into the greenway. So I'll hand it over to Doug to talk a little bit about some ideas for implementation.
Thanks a lot, Chris. I think as you can see from each of our public meetings and definitely from our last public forum, we've tried very hard to bring these ideas into focus and to identify the recommendation and tools to deliver the vision. And as Mick mentioned earlier, this diagram highlights how portions of the site will be delivered in the condition in which they will be provided back to the city. So in green is the property of the hospital proper, that the buildings would be demolished and cleaned per the agreement. The sites in yellow would be transferred back to the city as is, and it's those sites that, as mentioned earlier, could perhaps happen as quickly as sometime later next year, 2021. Next slide. Throughout this process, though, we've been talking about principles, we've been emphasizing the importance of connectivity, but also the importance of the public realm, as Chris just demonstrated. And this framework that you see on screen also provides the flexibility for the city and the community into develop this site over many different phases, but to allow flexibility to adapt to changes in the market or other conditions that may come to light in the future. And so across these 10 parcels, not only does it give you a series of options in how to begin or to look at early-phase development, but it is also an intentional way to provide diversity between not only the scale and type of housing or mixed-use product that would be provided, but also to engage perhaps multiple developers and multiple architects. So you create that richness that is seen throughout the best parts of the Bloomington neighborhoods in and around the site. We've also been with the city looking at initial set of zoning recommendations that reflect different scales of mixed-use as well as residential development that is intentionally done in a way to transition to this run in areas, but also to capitalize many of the important assets in and around the site. Next slide. And this master plan framework also considers ways to incrementally deliver parcels. As I mentioned before, this flexibility within the plan allows us to look at some of the more immediate parcels, perhaps on the east as well as what we're calling on the perhaps on the east as well as what we're calling on the west there on First Street, as ways to build off existing assets, whether it's off of the B-line and the Second Street, Morton Street connections that are already in place, or the available infrastructure of First Street on Parcel 1 West. This also speaks to the availability of that land so that we can create a sense of place and start to build this community on day one. Next. But we've considered those improvements in those early phases to also set up future phases and future investments that would extend to the balance of the site. Perhaps some of the larger development opportunities that exist along Second Street on either side of the existing parking garage, but also could be delivered in smaller phases, again, to support that range of diversity, working with a host of developers and architects in delivering this vision. Next. And throughout this process, we've been tracking not only the development potential, as Rachel highlighted, or as Chris mentioned in his presentation, the improvements to the public realm, but also the enabling projects that will support both the early phases as well as later phases of the project so that this can be done in a balanced and coordinated way, providing at this stage not only flexibility, but the beginning outlines of a roadmap for the city to consider scenarios and options on how to develop the site over multiple phases. Next. So, perhaps to conclude, and if I could just have another minute or two, I'd want to sort of summarize one of the things that came out very early in our conversations and walks around the site. And it's to define what is, Rachel, if you can go back, it's to define what is unique about Bloomington, but also the great potential this site provides. And many of you and the mayor himself spoke about reflecting the values of Bloomington. And so, we've taken a first pass at some artists' illustrations of what that may be. And so, we've got three views that start to communicate how these values can be reflected in the development of this very important site. And so, as you can see here, this is a view from the B-line, almost standing in the parking lot outside the grocery store, looking west. And you can see the hospital and the parking garage just in the background over that tree line. If you go to the next slide, Rachel, this is an early impression of how the Greenway could come out and meet the B-line so that you're welcome and greeted into this community. Chris had mentioned the idea of a plaza that could be used for a number of events and casual activities, but also that it sets up an approach to the ground floor of these buildings. Perhaps there's a coffee shop, or as Rachel mentioned, other community uses located in the ground floor of these buildings, that it's not all retail, but they contribute to the vibrancy of this place and the diversity of the people and communities that are welcomed into the site. Next. Similarly, we've talked about the plan and the principles really reflect a sense of transition to the surrounding areas and that it's been tailored, the zoning, the recommendations have really been tailored to make those transitions as seamless as possible. And so this is a view on First Street looking up the hill. You can see Fairview Street right where that crossing sign jets out over the street itself. If you go to the next slide, Rachel, that perhaps is an early phase when we talked about Phase 1 West, we can look at developing a series of single-family lots. Perhaps as we move further east, they can be increased in density to duplexes. Or as you can see on the other side of the street, even other types of multifamily and mixed-use development. And it's this diversity between parcels that really contributes to what we think is incredible and unique opportunity, given the scale of the site, but also the unique edges and transitions to the surrounding neighborhoods. Next. And perhaps the last view we'll share is along Second Street. Looking back at, you're all familiar with the parking garage, and this is a view from Building Trades Park. But what happens when we bring streets through so they meet Second Street? And we bring the connections from McDole Gardens up to this part of the site? And what happens when we look at adding new buildings and density? And if you go to the next slide, we've done this with very careful consideration of scale, but also within these blocks, we look to create greater variation in both the height and the massing, but also the quality of the architecture so that this speaks to the values of design, but also the attitudes about green, sustainability, and really a higher quality of life that's welcome and open to everyone. And so perhaps on that, I can turn it back over to Mick and the city for some closing remarks.
Thank you, Doug. And I hope that the last slide you saw, there were the ones that hopefully inspire you about the process. And again, remember, these are not the architecturally designed buildings that will be on the site, rather what might be potentially conceivable over time as the site develops out. It's really important to us that as the process continues, our consultant will continue to get cost estimates for the public infrastructure, the public realm, as they call it, and that will update the master plan and some other elements that they'll be working on over the course of the next month. But we really need to hear from the city residents, what you think about this plan. And we want you to go to BloomingtonHospitalSite.com and fill out the Google form. Take your time to look at the presentation tonight, scroll through these slides again at your time convenience, and provide us those comments by November 29th. And remember, our ultimate goal as a community, and what this plan should represent, is an adaptable, flexible master plan that guides the development of the site, allowing for the unknowns of our world, which we're all experiencing right now, that ultimately reacts to market conditions over the course of this multi-year, multi-phase development of the site. And we expect this to be at least a 10-year project, if not longer than that. Note too, that any development plans proposed by the public or by the private sector in the future will require a review by city staff, by the redevelopment commission and the plan commission, and possibly the city council, depending on the nature of the proposal. Proposals reviewed by those commissions or council obviously have public input opportunities as part of the review process. So, we don't want you to think that what you see today is the last time you get to weigh in. As the site develops, you'll get to weigh in all along as each of those projects comes forward in the future. We're looking forward to the opportunity with continued input from the community to transform this site into a new use for the next 100 years. And think about the opportunity that we all have at this moment in time, the snapshot that we have been fortunate enough to be given to repurpose this site. I want to thank personally the Hospital Reuse Committee members for their involvement. As Senator Simpson said, for some of them, it's been more than six years already. And as I teased her earlier, and the rest of the committee, you're not done yet. You'll still be involved in the future site development, as well as all of you from the public that have taken your time to comment and will continue, we know, to give us input on the site. So, with that, I'll turn it over to President Volin, and our team is here, ready to answer any questions that the city council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor and everyone who presented. It's an excellent and very interesting presentation, and it's obvious that an awful lot of work has gone into it. We are but five minutes over the allotted time for the presentation, so that's about five minutes less we'll have for questions. So, I really want to have a hard stop on Q&amp;A at 8:10. Again, just to reiterate, this is, there will be no public comment tonight, and there's no vote on this tonight. This is a draft presentation and a public meeting to get some feedback from council. And as the deputy mayor said, we're looking at a deadline for any comments from any member of the public through the website by November 29th. With that, I'd like to open the floor to questions from council members. I see Councilmember Rallo.
Thank you for a wonderful presentation. So, the range of housing types implies a couple of things, but one of them implies a range of income. And what were the discussions about accommodating a range of income? And what is the range of income that one would expect residents of this development to have?
I'll start to try to answer that, Councilmember Rallo, and then I'll let our team jump in as well. I know that during the discussion and in the principles, and this dates all the way back to the ULI process in 2018, our community has clearly said we need affordable and workforce housing types in here. So, you'll see that reflected. Now, it's impossible to tell you the exact price point of any of the product that might develop. That will obviously be coming as development comes forward. And as I know the council members are aware, the city is going to own the property. And owning the property means we have control over what is developed on the site, which is great. And it also provides us with some unique opportunities to provide incentives where appropriate for the kind of housing product that we'd like to see. So, with that in mind, you'll see the spectrum of housing options here, from possibly plexes, multifamily to single-family ownership. And I couldn't tell you the square foot of each of those options yet. That's where the market conditions and developers will have to come in and work with us to make that work. We clearly understand that our market requires housing product under $250,000, that there's not near enough of that. And I'm picking that number kind of out of the blue. I'm not suggesting that is the affordable ceiling at all. I'm just saying we know that there's a lack of housing in the under $250,000 range for homeownership in this community. So, I hope that it's a wide array of those things, different types, between homeownership and plexes and multifamily rental options, and all those varieties, we hope, are a part of what the market conditions will allow us to build. And there is possibility, one of the things we're discussing, as the core decision is still unknown, is that a potential site for, and not just there, but on the site generally, there's been some positive market-driven discussion about that being a potential site for li-tech credits and tax credits for affordable housing. So, just already the market is responding and suggesting there might be that opportunity on the site. And I'll let our team jump in if they have any more feedback than what I just offered.
I think that probably covers it, Mick. I think for the council, we did have a development advisor on our team as well as an economist that looked at a lot of those metrics that would be considered and brought into conversations with any eventual developer of a parcel or portions of the site so that those expectations would be clarified at the beginning of any conversations about vertical development and delivery of any parcel.
Mr. Rallo, does that satisfy your question?
Yes, it does. Thanks.
Thank you. I see Councilmember Rosenbarger and then Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Thank you, and thank you for that presentation. That was very impressive and thorough. I definitely got excited with some of those renditions. Oh, no, just to follow up on the housing question, I would say some of those images were, like here we have multifamily, over here we have single-family, you know, duplexes on this block. I understand the idea of scale and, right, sort of having things build in a certain direction. But I also really like the idea of like what our current neighborhoods have in this walkable area that is a single-family home next to an apartment building with eight units next to a single-family next to a duplex. So, can you speak a little bit to that thought of really like having the diversity of housing stock in the neighborhood, but having every block very diverse in its own right, I would say, versus like the scale that you're trying to make sort of from like the inside out, I guess?
Rachel, you might want to pop up one of the massing slides for this part of the conversation. Doug, why don't you jump in first, and then I'll add a comment?
Sure. So, a couple of things. The first is that I think the eventual rezoning of the site will allow that flexibility for greater diversity within each parcel. Because that just sets some guidepost to the zoning, but does not specify specific types. So, these could be combined in different ways within each parcel. One of the things I think we found very early with this smaller framework of development blocks, which was strongly encouraged by many in the community to emphasize walkability and activation on the streets and things of this sort, this is a good one, Rachel, thank you, is that we also tested how you deal with parking. And I don't want to imply that parking drives these conversations, but in the early phases, it is something that needs to be considered so that we don't create additional impacts within the surrounding areas. And so what we found, though, and maybe to answer the question, is that you can see the parcels in the darker purple on Second Street being higher density. And when we say 50 to 80 dwelling units per acre, that's an average of whether it's studio, one-bedroom, up to three-bedroom. But, you know, up to 80 dwelling units per acre is pretty good, and that parking can be handled within those blocks. So, you can see the scale of those blocks with, let's say, one that's closer to First Street, that we could look at increased density on some of those blocks. We could also look at stepping down on some of the blocks on Second Street. And I think this next level of specificity around the development proposals on each site is enabled by the zoning, but perhaps can be further clarified in conversations with developers to create as much diversity within the blocks as possible.
Well, Doug, you answered that a lot better than I would have. But I would just add that if this slide's a perfect representation of if we're really trying to capture as much density and housing product on the side as we can, Councilmember Rosenbarger, it's a little difficult to have a lot of off-and-on, single-family here, duplex there. And we begin to lose the ability to have more housing product on the site. So, while it's a, you'll see, again, I wanted to point out on the side by McDole Gardens, that there is most likely where you'll see the kind of gradual feathering into the neighborhood of the kind of product that fits most closely with what's already in the neighborhood. But certainly, the market may suggest that there are opportunities to spread that housing product type out in other locations on the site. This was just done to try to get as many units in the most likely place where they should go, density-wise, to address our housing shortage.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, I wanted to talk about financing. So, I heard a lot of talk about, you know, infrastructure changes, even on our existing streets, First and Second Street are going to be transformed, and that all costs a lot of money. So, I wonder how, you know, before we even get somebody who's going to build the housing, how are we going to pay for all of the infrastructure changes?
So, those are some of the elements that, a component of our master planning team that you not see here tonight, although I think one of the engineers is on the call, and I'm not putting you on the spot, Karen, so don't worry. But they're still amassing the cost of the master plan for us so that we can start to process that as a group before the master plan's finalized. It is important to note that First Street, for example, is already an MPO-funded project. So, you can kind of subtract that one out of the total cost because it is funded by one of the methods that the city uses to improve its streets as it is. It's possible others could be funded in the future that way. Don't forget that the tax increment that we will gain from turning this site from its current use, which is non-tax, a non-tax group as a hospital, that many of the development that will occur here over time will bring increment into the district, and it's something we can look at and consider that as part of the way we'll return some of the cost of the investments that'll be necessary to be made. And also, it's important to note that we may have to decide whether the city funds some or all of that infrastructure, or if the developers have to do that as part of the build-out over time, since this is a multi-phase project. We'll have more information about the cost elements of that when the master plan's finalized as part of the report that goes along with the master plan.
And if I may just follow up, so when is the master plan to be finalized with the financials as well?
I will turn that over to- I will turn that over to Doug to tell me what he thinks, based on the November 29th feedback that we hope to get from the community and from the councilors. And then what time you need to turn around to Doug?
Well, our hope, as was mentioned, we've already started that assessment. And so given the feedback and probably further coordination with the city, we should be able to have that by the end of the year. I believe that was the initial intent, so that it could go to both the redevelopment commission as well as back to this council for their approval.
I would just say that it does go back to redevelopment commission as the final entity that is the entity that owns the site. As Councilmember Volan's already looking at me, like I said, I thought you didn't have to approve this plan and you don't have to approve the plan, councilmembers.
What if we want to?
Well, you can endorse the plan. We would love that.
We'll talk. Councilmember Phee Mont Smith?
So we'll have more financial information before the end of the year?
Correct.
Is that what I'm hearing? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Scambaluri? You're muted.
I think I would have that down by now. Thank you for the presentation. This is all really, really exciting. Deputy Mayor Renaisen, you mentioned really briefly possible eligibility for tax credits for affordable housing in that area. Can you say more about that and how that might work, how that could unfold?
Well, as we were working with S.B. Friedman and Alex Crowley's on this call, I think he can jump in too. We've just said, well, you know, as we're debating the merits of the core building, and there are many, and there are some drawbacks to keeping it as well, and we're trying to flesh all those out. We wanted to see what the market, development market, thought about the building structurally, repurposing it and so forth. And so it was actually through conversations with some folks that Alex has had tour the building, where they suggested it was possible that that could be a way to fund the project if that building were to be kept. So that's really primarily where that conversation has been. Councilmember Scambaluri and Alex, if you have anything else you want to add to amplify that, feel free to jump in.
Yeah, there was enthusiasm about the core building itself. And then generally, you know, I think the city has become aware of the fact that affordable housing often needs local support to be able to be successful. And that can come in the form of a variety of different subsidies. So that can be land value, for example. It can be tax abatement, the other forms of contributions. So I think depending on the mix that we ultimately want to deliver when it comes to affordable housing, particularly at the lower ranges of income, then we'll have to evaluate those proposals as they come in, determine what is the appropriate amount of local funding to support that.
That's helpful. Thank you. And that actually feeds into my next couple of questions. But can you say more about the current condition of the admin building and the parking garage? I'm not sure who made the comment that this may be like a 10-year build-out. And I'm wondering what kind of condition they're in, what the life expectancy might be. Could you speak to that?
Certainly. I can start that discussion and team members, you can jump in. We had an assessment done of the parking structure, which we've already determined is got a long enough life to keep it and use it for its life. And it's at least 20-plus years of life left in that structure. And that's all contingent on how you take care of it, right? So we've been very thoughtful about our conversations with IU Health, and they are continuing to take care of the structure, even though they're going to depart the site. So we feel confident that it's been managed well and it will get every bit of the minimum amount of those years that engineers have told us will be in it. On the core admin building, that one's a little different. It is actually not occupied at the moment. It is obviously been, it's one of the older structures on the site. And we're still assessing some of the challenges of an older structure that might have asbestos in it, which it does have some. But we're just trying to find out what the potential ramifications of that are when you start tearing it up to remodel or reconfigure how it's laid out, if that's in fact how it's best used is in the future. And it also is attached to the newer part of the hospital, the 60s addition, in a way that nobody has blueprints and can quite understand what's going to happen when they start to tear down the big structure, what's going to be behind the curtain. So, you know, we're still talking through all those elements. And the condition of the admin building is not as good as, not necessarily bad everywhere, but it has HVAC issues and just an older structure in general. So those are still the reasons why I couldn't tell you today what our recommendation will be on Core, because we're still Core Administration Building, because we're still going through all those steps to make sure we have as much information as we can before we make a recommendation to the redevelopment commission.
That's helpful. Thank you. And to echo Senator Simpson and Mayor Hamilton, thank you to everyone who worked on this. It's very exciting. So thanks.
Thank you. Further questions from my colleagues? Councilmember Smith?
Well, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. It was great. Very exciting project. Looks fantastic. So that leads me to my question is, it's a wonderful visioning. And for me on the city council, it's a wonderful visioning and the controls we have on, and this may be a question that Mick responds to as well. For us to get it to look beautiful like it has been envisioned in the presentation, how do we do that as a city? And how does that, how will that happen?
Well, we'll get the true cost of making it as beautiful and inspiring as you just saw. And then we'll have to go look at our sources, right? So that one logical place to do redevelopment is the redevelopment commission. And it has a limited amount of funds, but this is a site, as I mentioned earlier, that will actually create increment financing for itself over time as it builds out privately. Parts of it will be private, right? So that'll be some part of it. We're fortunate enough to use some MPO money for one street. We can try to program that in. There are grants for some of these opportunities. And then we're going to rely on our private sector partners to possibly build out some of these elements. Again, we're not going to do a master developed all at once, plop down all these structures all in one fell swoop. It's going to happen periodically over time. So I think, Councilmember Smith, the answer is it's going to be multitudes of different mechanisms that we're going to have to use. Controlling the land means we're going to either lease it or sell it. I think we're predisposed to trying to keep the land if we can. There's a cost to that, right? But we can also get some ROI by leasing the land out and have some potential revenue from the lease side of it too. So we're going to look at all those avenues. And we're going to look for a partner to help us understand it better as we start to work through that. But first and foremost, we're waiting for the master plan to give us those basic cost elements that will inform us about what we need to do next.
And the people that would be engaged to help us build it, our partners in the private sector or our own initiatives, those, say like a plaza down the middle that looks beautiful, it would be the planning department in the city that would then look to make it fit that vision. Do I, is that how I understand it?
So again, our best control over this, it's very unusual. The city doesn't typically own land. We usually are responding to some developer who's bought land and then comes to the plan staff and commission and says, we'd like to build this on there. And then we kind of have to live with the fact that the planner, I'm sorry, the developer owns the property. Here, it's like the city has a vision. Here's the vision. If you build the vision, you're going to get approval, right? Because this is what we want to see on our land. I say ours, our land, all of us, right? So if we agree that this is the right vision for the site, the right master plan, then we can kind of negotiate with those who want to build what we want to see. And if we don't like what we see, we don't have to let them build. I think that's the most unusual part of this property, I would say, is that the city will control what happens here. And so therefore, we can hold out if we want to, and we can create whatever incentives we want to to see what we want built here.
Thank you. Thank you for going over that.
I hope that answers your question.
It did. Thank you very much.
Mick, I'll just follow up on that really quickly for Councilmember Smith. So part of our task here is also to develop a set of guidelines. Now, these aren't something that, they're not voted on or anything, as Mick mentioned, but they are specific to the public realm and specifically the Greenway Plaza that you're mentioning and sort of the different elements and aspects of it that we feel are appropriate to kind of make sure that they fulfill that vision. And so that will be handed off to the city then to help guide the future development that takes place. So hopefully, it helps it along a little bit more in becoming a reality.
Well, thank you. Yeah, it's a beautiful vision and I appreciate, thank you for going over that for me.
Thank you. Further questions from members? Councilmember Sandberg and then Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. I too am very excited to see this coming along to help us with our housing gap issues. I do want to follow up a little bit to Councilmember Smith's question. If this is basically city-driven, because we're the owners of this land that we now have the opportunity to develop, is it possible that our values could incentivize more the affordability of anything built here? Again, our contribution to anyone coming along to develop affordable housing would be the offer of the land, which would make their development a lot more inexpensive. But with respect to the private partnerships, I mean, aren't they going to be more invested in market rate developments? And so to what extent have you thought about, or this is maybe a question that, you know, will be part of the input from the public, could we have some assurance that a lot of this is going to be developed for truly affordable, not just workforce, but truly affordable housing? Because it is our opportunity to do that and set the tone for that and perhaps have the incentives for the developers willing to do that for exchange for the free land.
I'll start and others jump in. I do certainly think we've heard loud and clear from our community the need to have more housing generally or affordable workforce housing specifically. And I think we've also heard, but we don't want it to be a monoculture, right? We don't want every, this is not a project where it's intended to be only affordable housing and nothing else. It needs to have a combination and the market's going to dictate some of that. The right ratio is going to be driven by what development partner can come in and make it work financially? And how much does the city incentivize that to make sure we get what we want? And what we want is more affordable housing product. But we also, you know, this is this look that you all like, this vision, it's probably not going to be cheap. I'm pretty sure. And that's okay. Look at this site in relation to our downtown. And I always like to frame things in the decades ahead that we can't envision and that we won't possibly know what all is going to happen. But it's possible that is our downtown in 50 years. That'll feel like our downtown. We have to be mindful of all these other things while we're doing this. Nonetheless, it has clearly been a principle of this development to make sure there's the appropriate amount. And if you ask me a percentage, what is appropriate, I couldn't tell you today because the market conditions are going to certainly drive some of that. Others want to comment from our team?
Mick, if I can jump in, I think Councilmember Sandberg, I think one of the advantages of truly affordable low-income housing tax credit development is that it allows us to leverage local investments against federal and state funding, right? And I think we've done that reasonably well in the past. So it does allow us to spread our money and our resources further than we might be able to do if we just went at it alone, which is good. But of course, it comes with a cost. And so there's going to be a limit to the amount that we can ultimately do. We just have to balance that out over time.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. I too thank everyone for the presentation. I know there's a lot of work involved and you'll probably have this memorized and can do it all by rote by now, the presentation. But my question has to do with, I think one of the benefits will be increased housing density, which is the plan and the vision. But I don't recall, maybe I missed it, hearing very much about public transportation infrastructure or how are we going to coordinate with what we have existing? So can someone speak on that or has there been any thoughts with regard to public transportation amenities with this project?
Well, maybe I could start. One of the benefits of having this connected street grid is it allows us to do two things. The first is to look at the optimal alignment of any existing transit lines or where additional transit service would have the most benefit to those within walking distance to said stations or bus stops or other modes. The other thing it allows us to do is to, I'd say phase, but to align those transit improvements as the sites developed over time. So I think it gives the city a lot of opportunities to optimize those transit investments to support the ongoing development over time, but also in a way that the street grid actually creates connections to a broader segment of the community to access transit, whether it's by bicycle or by short distances of walking safely along new and improved streets.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
More works required, though. Councilman Sims?
Councilmember Flaherty, do you have any questions?
None at this time. Thanks.
Thanks. All right. I'll take a crack here. Could you put the slides back up? I've got questions that involve the slides, starting with slide 15. I'm glad to hear that the core building is still under consideration. But I was also curious about, there's a half dozen houses on Second Street between the Beeline and Rogers. Are those in such poor condition that they can't be rehabbed or moved?
Those are the properties leased to the New Hope Family Center. And they are in the process of master planning a new site. They are planning on moving. And I've been in several of the houses. Emily Pike was nice enough to give us a tour of the site last summer, before COVID. And they definitely are dated and I wouldn't, I think anything is remodelable, Steve, Councilmember Volan, and certainly could be, but it would severely limit the ability to have density on the site if we were to leave them there. And as it turns out, New Hope is moving to a new site in a couple of years anyway.
But I mean, could the houses be moved?
Haven't looked into that.
They'd be affordable too, even if they need some rehabbing?
Yeah, haven't looked into that yet.
Okay. That'd be interesting to look into. Slide 20, if you can go forward a few slides. I was curious as to why maybe there couldn't be a little bit more connectivity. If you can go forward five slides. There you go. So, I mean, I saw Maple Street going around Hunter School and I wondered why Jackson Street couldn't go past the parking garage to the side of Building Trades Park. I mean, more connectivity is better. Couldn't that also wrap around, it would be less of a wraparound than Maple Street is?
So I can take a pass at that because we had looked at that quite closely. From the right end of the arrow on Jackson Street, right by the garage, is close to the high point of the site. And the grade difference between that point and Second Street would create a very steep section of a continued Jackson Street out to Second where it probably wouldn't be accessible on sidewalk for pedestrians. It'd be over 5%. So that introduces some challenges as pedestrian connections. We could probably do it from a vehicle standpoint. But again, the connections from Second Street into the parking garage, they're also beneficial so that we don't create additional curb cuts or turn-ins from Fairview Street. So I guess the point is it could have further consideration in the eventual development of that block. But it was a bit of a challenge vertically making the connection.
Okay, so it wasn't the building massing driving the grid. It was the terrain driving the way the grid. Okay.
Correct.
If we can go to slide 31. Could the bike lanes on, could they're not, well? the bike lanes on, could they're not, well, actually, this would be the north side of Second Street. You had the bike lane, the protected bike lane on the north side of the street and the parking on the south side. There we go. Yeah. Why not reverse them? Why not have the protected bike lane on the south side of the street like the seven line? Is going to be and have parking on the north side. I mean, if if the, is this considered just like through traffic for bicyclists or? Because it's going to be harder for them to cross the street. And I'd rather make it easier for bicyclists in this case. Is there any terrain issue here?
So I can take this question. So the the terrain wasn't so much the issue here. And you can see in the foreground, actually, of the section on the right, we're proposing an enhanced sort of plaza-like connection across Second Street. So we find that that could be an entrance really to this bike way. And we we had considered the bike way actually along the south side of the street. But when we really looked at the sort of broader cycle network within Bloomington, we saw that already to the west side, as you get to Twin Lakes Recreational Complex, that there is already some multipurpose trail on the north side of the street. And we felt that this, it would be easiest for cyclists to link up to that existing bike way by being on the north side of the street. So it is something that we considered and it could be also something that, I mean, either side could be considered in the future as well, but ultimately we decided to to tie into the broader network. The north seemed like a better recommendation. And then just enhancing the safety and the ease of crossing Second Street to be able to get to that asset was the kind of move we wanted to make.
Great, thank you. My last question would be on slide 52, the development framework slide. Although this is just more of a visual aid than anything else, but the I guess maybe this slide is what triggered this thought, although I don't think it's related to the slide. But to what extent have you considered condominiums as, in other words, one of the biggest problems with affordability is not everybody can afford a house on a plot of land. They just want to buy an apartment when it comes to affordable housing. To what extent has that been considered, the idea that people can buy their own apartment as opposed to only being able to rent apartments? How does that play into consideration of of these projects?
Well, maybe if I can respond first, but then, you know, I think part of your question is how do you enforce that moving forward with developers that will be doing the vertical development on each site? Clearly, within any of these scenarios, those options are available. I think it'll be determined by the market as much as input from the city. And so how the city can provide guidance to sort of those larger aspirations? And again, maybe it's tied to other, I don't want to say policies, but sort of other materials that are provided as part of the engagement with developers.
Okay, thank you. Are there any last minute questions? We've got about five minutes left for follow ups. Anybody else? Okay, well, Councilmember Rallo.
Since we have a minute too, I just wondered about the water feature that's flowing through this site. Is that, is that something that is already existing? Or is this anticipated stormwater from the entire site? But is it, is there already, I suppose? Is it piped underground right now? Is that what's happening?
It's not something that currently exists, but it is designed to accommodate the majority of the stormwater collection on site. And it's used as bio retention and kind of the grading works in such a way that the stormwater would be all guided to that that system.
Well, it looks to be, well, the appearance of this rendering is that it is a permanent feature. I mean, the water, that is, is that true?
There would be times that it would be dry. This would be in a wet condition. So in a dry condition, it would, you know, it would kind of read it as, you know, a swaled kind of landscape bed with native plants.
Okay, so it would be intermittently wet?
Yeah.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith, this would be the last question, I think.
Yeah, I just want to ask, what part of the process comes next? So if we get the the master plan by the end of the year with all the recommendations and the drawings, et cetera, what happens after that?
Yeah, that's that's a very good question, Councilmember Piedmont Smith. I think because the hospital will be turning over parcels of property in phases to us, and we don't have the answer to when the phases will start to happen. We just know the main site won't happen until they completely remediate the site, which we don't think we'll get a clean remediated available site for development on the main parcel until 2023, but those ancillary parcels could come over the course of next year and the year after. So when there's a big enough amassed space that we can market, we think what's likely is that first phase that Doug pointed out on the east side along the Beeline is most likely the first transferable parcels as well from our initial conversations with IU Health. And that we could start to build out some of the public infrastructure that then creates the impetus for private sector investment. And then, again, follow what comes next. Is that the western side closer to McDull Gardens? Because that's also what we understand IU Health is starting to vacate and won't need as long as they will need the main hospital site. So as those parcels become more known, when the transfers occur, we'll be able to start laying out a phasing in approach to what development will occur. And then the city will need to start hiring through its redevelopment commission, I think most likely is the starting point, architects and engineers to design the roads, the first phase of road development and greenway development, and articulate where those funds are going to come from. And how long will that timeline take to build that out? And also go out and look for development partners, which is why we've been trying to get this master plan done early. It gives us the chance to go out and sort of shop the vision with the market to see where there's interest. So fate, different sort of parallel tracks will define the exact steps. But that's kind of how I see it playing out in the coming six months to a year after we get the master plan. As a document, we can start to share and use the guidelines from the plan to drive the next steps. Anybody else want to offer anything else you think as next steps from your perspective? They don't want to overrule me, but so they're going to go with what I said, I think.
So is there an owner's representative going to be involved soon?
You know, we, as you are well aware, we worked very hard to try to lock down and owners' representatives, owners' representatives spent quite a bit of time talking to one particular owner's representative. At the end of the day, we agreed to to break up in a fashion that we both agreed it was a square peg in a round hole. Their their methodology for going forward did not match ours and vice versa. And we parted in amicable terms. And quite frankly, that that owner's rep is a developer and is interested in developing on the site regardless, whether they were involved as the owner's rep or not. So we're currently looking at other methods we might be able to use. We've learned a lot in this process. I personally feel that way. I think our team would articulate that as well. And there may be a different model and we'll be working with the Hospital Reuse Committee and co-chair Senator Simpson and the mayor, of course, and the whole HRC to help guide us on that next step. So that's another parallel track is to decide what do we do now that we don't have an owner's rep identified? But we still know we need to fill that void with something. So we're talking about that in the coming weeks before the end of the year. We'll be talking to the HRC about that.
Thank you.
And with that, I want to thank everyone who has presented tonight, especially co-chair Senator Simpson and Deputy Mayor Renison and the team from SOM. Thank you for a very interesting presentation. We look forward to the completion of it. I also predict sometime in the next decade, word to the wise Prospect Hill and McDull Gardens, their neighborhood parking tones coming your way, just FYI. Anyway, thank you. And with that, we're going to move on to the next item on council agenda, appointments to boards and commissions.
Thank you so much for your attention tonight and and your careful thought about this. And we'll look forward to talking to you many more times in the future. BloomingtonHospitalSite.com to go to leave your comments.
BloomingtonHospitalSite.com. Leave your comments before November 29th, November 30th?
Thank you for that infomercial. I appreciate it.
Always a pleasure. Thanks again. And again, please send your comments to BloomingtonHospitalSite.com. It's a good place to put it for the next couple of weeks through the end of the month. All right, are there any appointments to boards and commissions?
A point of order, Mr. President? The next thing would be council committees and then public comment?
Sorry, council committees and boards, commissions confused. My apology. Next, the reports from council committees. Are there any? Seeing now, we now go to reports from the public. If there's a member of the public who would like to address the council on an item that was not on tonight's agenda, now is your opportunity to do so. Can I see a show of hands of how many people would like to speak? You need to use the raise hand function in Zoom or type into the chat. Again, this is for items that are not the subject of the legislation. There will be opportunities to speak to those items as they come up. If there's anyone who is interested, please use the raise hand function in Zoom or type into the chat and you will be called on by Stephen Lucas, the council attorney. I see one hand raised. Are there any other people who would like to speak during public comment on items not on the agenda? Well, seeing few, I will give Mr. Shelton five minutes. Mr. Lucas?
And Mr. Shelton should be unmuted and ready to comment.
Good evening, Council. Jim Shelton with the Chamber of Commerce, but speaking at the moment on behalf of CASAs, our court-appointed special advocates, to update you in the public on the status of our program. I told you a couple, well, several weeks ago about our upcoming fall training. It just finished last week and the grads were sworn in today by Judge Galvin and Judge Harvey. And next week they will be assigned cases on Wednesday, which is the day the staff meets and passes out cases. Right now, we have, the last I heard, a backlog of 59 children who needed a CASA to help them. CASAs are volunteers who advocate for the children who are in the juvenile court system because they've been abused or neglected by their parents. As I've told you guys, the COVID pandemic is having a severe strain on families. Lack of income, irregular access to childcare, et cetera, is really putting a lot of stress on parents. And sadly, a lot of times this results in the children being abused or neglected. So the number of children in the system has increased. The need for CASAs has increased. So we're very happy that this class graduated and sworn in can take cases. And I want to make sure the public's aware that we will still need volunteers. Our next training session will be the winter session will start February 9th and run through March 3rd. They will be conducted via Zoom. It'll be Monday, Wednesday and Thursday evenings from 5:30 to 8:30. And I just want people to think about it. It's an excellent way to help children. It's an excellent way to help your community. You will learn a lot and you'll really help some children. So you can learn more about it by going to Monroe County CASA.org, click on the volunteer link. You'll find a frequently asked question page or you can call 333-2272 and talk to a staff member. We're going to have a coffee with CASA on, the date is approximately December 15th. At about eight in the morning, you'll be able to have a coffee with a number of CASA volunteers and some staff members. You can check out the CASA website and find out that exact date when it's set. It'll be done via Zoom and you can learn a lot and have any questions you may have answered. So thank you for this opportunity to spread the word.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak on an item not on the agenda? Please raise your hand in Zoom or type into the chat. Second call. Final call for public comment on items not on the agenda. And with that, we'll close public comment. There will be another period at the end of the evening, of the meeting. We now go to appointments to boards and commissions. Do we have any appointments, proposals? Seeing no appointments, we'll move on to legislation for second reading and resolutions. Madam Parliamentarian?
Yes, I move that ordinance 20-31 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Will the clerk please call the role and the motion to introduce?
Yes, Councilmember Scandallory?
Yes.
Rosenbarker?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Thank you. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2031 to amend Title II of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Administration and Personnel, inserting Chapter 2.35, establishing the Department of Engineering and amending Chapter 2.14, titled Planning and Transportation Department. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance creates the Department of Engineering and eliminates the Transportation and Traffic Engineering Services Division from the Planning and Transportation Department. Your administration committee recommendation was to pass 400.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 20-31 be adopted.
Second.
All right, the item is on the agenda. Who is here to present for about the engineering department? I see Philippa Guthrie Corporation Council. Welcome.
Thank you, Philippa Guthrie Corporation Council. So this this ordinance is to establish a separate engineering department. Since 2014, engineering has been in the Planning and Transportation Department. Before that, it was in Public Works. And in 2018, I think you are aware, we have, we hired a consultant, NOVAC, to look at various departments of the city to assess their efficiency, their organization and make recommendations. And they included in the last year, Public Works and planning and transportation. And one of the issues that they identified was engineering and where was the best place for it? So they looked at at returning it to Public Works. They looked at whether it should stay with planning and transportation. And their recommendation ultimately was that it should have its own separate department. Their, one of their primary rationales was that even though it was housed in in a different department in the past and currently is in a, in a, another department, that the engineer services so many departments of the city, utilities, transit, even though they are technically separate, they consult a lot on the use of public's right of ways. As well as obviously the planning department, traffic and Public Works, parks as well. And that it would, it would be most efficient if it had its own department so that the engineer could service all of those departments equally. The other thing is that when it's housed in another department, so for right now, it's been in, most recently, planning. The engineer is not able to administer its own budget, his or her own budget. It has to go through the department head of the department that it's housed in. And this would allow the individual who is in charge of, you know, a project, that's a lot of what they do is is help with the engineering on various projects to better manage the and more manage the the budget itself, the engineer. The other issue is that this would place the engineer, the engineer is appointed by the executive, by the mayor. And it would place the engineer in a position similar to other department heads and give the engineer better access and more consistent access directly to the office of the mayor. So that that is our recommendation. So that is our recommendation, and that's why we have this ordinance before you. It would just create a new department in Title II. And that's where all of the other executive departments reside. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And with that, because I'm the chair of the administration committee, I'll give the report on this item. On behalf of councilmembers Rallo, Scambaluri, and Sims, who also serve on the admin committee, there were a number of written questions related to the creation of the department that included the fiscal impact of creating a department, the way that the department, the new department would collaborate with other departments, how other cities organize their departments with respect to engineering, whatever funds the new department would have control over, where it would physically be situated within City Hall or within a city building, and how the public's experience would change with respect to interacting with the city based on the reorganization. There was discussion in committee about the role of planning and transportation in the development of transportation policy. Planning would still create the policy. The department would carry it out. Department of Public Works would provide maintenance upon completion of a transportation policy project. With that, the committee decided not to retain it for more than one meeting. The recommendation was 400. So they found it favorable, and it is now here in the lap of the whole council. With that, open the floor to questions on ordinance 2031. Are there any questions from council members? First call. Second call. Seeing no questions from council members, we'll go to the public for comment on ordinance 2031 to create a Department of Engineering. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak to this item? Please use the raise hand function in Zoom or type into the chat. Mr. Lucas, do we have any takers?
Yes, I see Greg Alexander, who should now be able to unmute and comment.
Mr. Alexander, please go ahead.
Thanks. My name's Greg Alexander. I think it's important to look at how we got here, you know, why the engineering division was moved into the planning department, I don't know, six years ago. And there were a few problems that I saw as a transportation user and transportation activist, you know, a decade ago when it was, when it was in Public Works. One problem, and you know, the, the, the planning staff really, they would probably kick themselves if they realized they said this in front of me. But I actually saw a planning staff member who's still with the department a decade ago say directly that they had asked for bicycle facilities on Walnut and College, and the engineers in Public Works had simply rejected the proposal. And that kind of thing, I think, you know, reading between the lines, looking at other engineering decisions that were made, that was endemic. The planners wanted to move forward, and the engineers that were in Public Works simply did not want to move forward. The engineers that we had, the specific people we had in that position, they were dishonest to the council. And it was, it was stunning to me to see Andy Ruff actually factually correct Adrian Reed in, in public counsel on a, on a significant point. So that's not just me saying that. They were belligerent to, to Chris Sturbaum, who has never been much of an activist. And then finally, Justin Wykoff was caught embezzling money. He went to jail for it. So that's, you know, that was a severely dysfunctional engineering division at that time. And I can't tell you what Mayor Cruzan was thinking, but, but it seems to me like they definitely needed more supervision. And they need supervision specifically by planners, by people with a background in planning and a commitment to the comprehensive plan, the, at the time, the growth policies plan, it was called. And the thing is, I don't care one way or the other, whether engineering division is inside of planning or not. So you might as well vote yes for this, but those fundamental motivating problems haven't changed. Public Works is still essentially hostile to change. Public Works still looks at bike and pedestrian facilities as something that they resent the obligation. And if you look at structurally how Public Works, because it's not, this is not a problem necessarily with the people. It definitely, it is a problem with some of the people in Public Works, but it's not, it's not a personal problem. It's, it's really, it's a structural problem. Public Works is massive. Public Works is, has had a huge responsibility for a very long time, and it's run by a political appointee. You know, Adam Wason was appointed temporarily, but turned out to be permanently to be in that position as the director of Public Works on day one of Hamilton's administration, on January 1st. That, that's a political decision. In order for a political appointee to run such a vast apparatus, he has to really trust his lieutenants. And so he's not going to be able to oversee an engineer, for example. But on top of that, he's not really going to oversee any of the traffic-related responsibilities. And that's not a failing of the specific person in that position. That's just, change is really, really hard. It is, it's all right that they're failing at change, but I would like to see some success at change. And so we need to tackle this problem of Public Works. And, you know, I, I rejected-
You have one minute.
Thank you. I rejected a dozen different stories, anecdotes, to show the different ways that Public Works is the holdup. I really, I could go on for hours about this. Public Works, every single good thing that happens goes and dies in Public Works. And it's going to be important going forward to put pressure on Public Works. And my biggest concern about engineering division in particular is that when Public Works doesn't cooperate with a plan, when Public Works sabotages through inaction, incompetence, disregard, whatever, an engineering design, which has happened many times recently, that the engineer needs to be able to tell you guys that he's having trouble with Public Works, needs to be able to tell the mayor that he's having trouble with Public Works. That's a very difficult position to put someone in bureaucratically to say, this person in another department is stonewalling me. But we need that, or we're simply not going to get the kind of change that we need to see. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public who'd like to comment on ordinance 2031? Second call. Final call for comment on ordinance 2031. Please use the raise hand function in Zoom or type into the chat. Mr. Lucas, do we have any other takers?
I don't believe so, no.
All right. With that, we come back to the council for follow-up questions or debate. Is there any question or final comment on ordinance 2031? Councilmember Rallo.
First, I'd like to thank Philippa for getting back about the composition of the planning commission. I didn't reply, but thank you for that information. Doesn't seem to change the composition at all that this, this ordinance. I wanted to address Mr. Alexander's comment because I think it's, he's correct. I, I've been along, around long enough to remember a time when engineers, certain engineers in the city were sort of retrograde in terms of their view of things like complete streets or putting road diets or including other types of bike-competitive infrastructure and so forth. And it was really, it was palpable. It was, I mean, I, it got to the point where I actually approached the then mayor several times to make a plea that certain roads were being overdesigned. That is, that they were, they were too, they were, they were being constructed too wide, which is going to mean faster traffic on these streets. And unfortunately, they were, they were, they were redesigned. But the point being is that I don't have any misgivings about creating a separate department now. I think that that was a previous generation of, of engineers. And I think that the current engineers, I think, are very well understand where our policy is and what it's emphasizing in terms of multimodal, all types of transportation and not just accommodating the automobile. So, so that said, I, I will support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rallo. Questions or comments from my other colleagues? Second call. Seeing that, I will take a brief opportunity to echo Councilmember Rallo. I was around at that time as well, and I recall vividly the debate over roundabouts, in particular, the Saran Rogers roundabout was the one that got built, that was built to the original specs of the engineers at the time. And enough members of council thought it would, that it and the other plans for roundabouts in 2011 were so big that they extended, we extended the budget process that year over it. And the next year, in the ad hoc Special Committee on Street Design and Engineering Standards, the then director of engineering could not tell the committee what induced traffic was. Didn't know the concept that the wider you build a road, the more likely you are to create and generate trips because people perceive it to be easier to travel on that path. So that was indicative of the thinking at the time, and I agree with Mr. Rallo that the city engineers have come a long way since then. I do think it's slightly different than the questions before us, but I also think that this idea is, the time for this idea has come. The, it was the right move to move engineering out of Public Works and into planning at the time. And now we've evolved enough to see that engineering really does need its own department. I also frankly think that of the jobs Mr. Wason has held in City Hall, that he's best suited for director of Public Works, and I think he's doing a very good job. He still owes me a sanitation report, but that's another matter for another night. But, you know, I think everyone acknowledges that the Public Works is a, is a tough job. It's basically a department of departments. Some of the divisions are as big as other departments in City Hall. So it's, it's a challenge, but it is important that the tail not wag the dog. I mean, policy should stay with planning, but the engineer cuts sort of like, it's the right thing to go between planning and Public Works and to have the engineer be in its own department. The reports are up to the mayor. So I have to say that I, I favor this as well, and I look forward to seeing how it works out. Any last comments? Councilmember Sandberg?
I too feel the need to defend the honor of Adam Wason. He being characterized as a political appointee is certainly doing a disservice to his leadership skills, his people's skills, and his ability to manage a department that is so multifaceted as his public works. And so, you know, I want to caution people to be a little bit careful. I know it's easy to make comparisons from a decade ago or administration past. And that's fair. You know, you can assess what was good about it, what was bad about it, and what we hope to do moving forward. But again, our department heads are quite, quite good. And I think he will be able to manage professional engineers. And times have changed with respect to the engineers that we have on staff regarding our UDO and all the work that went toward that in creating what the community values and what the community wants to see. Comparing what was then with now is just apples to oranges. And again, I respect the work of Adam Wason, and I hope the community of Bloomington does as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Final comment on ordinance 2031. Seeing no other comment, I'll ask the clerk to call the role on ordinance 2031.
Ms. Councilmember Rosenbarker?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
And I believe that ordinance passes 9-0. Thank you, Ms. Guthrie, and thank you for-
Thank you all very much.
... presentation. We now move to the next item on the agenda.
Mr. President, I move that Resolution 20-17 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call the role in the motion to introduce?
Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Sorry. Oh, I didn't hear. Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
And Rosenbarker?
Yeah.
All right. Will the clerk please read by title and synopsis?
Resolution 2017 authorizing the allocation of the Jack Hopkins Social Services Recover Forward Funding Cycle Funds for the year 2020 and related matters. The synopsis is as follows. This resolution brings forward the recommendations of the 2020 Jack Hopkins Social Services Funding Program Committee. The principal task of the committee is to recommend funding for local services, local social services agency proposals that best meet program criteria and best meet the needs of the community. This resolution allocates a total of $224,905.21 to 25 different agency programs. The resolution also approves the funding agreements with these agencies, accepts the report of the committee, and authorizes the chair of the committee to resolve any questions regarding the interpretations of the agreements. Your committee recommendation was to pass 700.
Thank you.
I move that Resolution 2017 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. I believe Councilmember Sandberg is the chair of the Jack Hopkins Social Services Funding Committee. Ms. Sandberg, before you present, could you name the members of the committee?
Yes, I would be happy to do that. This was a very smooth working team. We had a round one to dispatch with the first round of Jack Hopkins, and then we had a second opportunity. And the members of that committee are Matt Flaherty, Sue Scambaluri, Ron Smith, Tim Mayer, Mark Fraley, Lauren McAlister. And I was pleased to be able to chair this year's first round and second round. And the second round, of course, was with respect to our COVID response, our recover forward. We were very delighted to have $200,000 to allocate. And we actually had more than that because there was unfortunately one agency from the first round that had to, they were not able to do the project that they had proposed. And so we had a little bit more to go around. And so our criteria for Jack Hopkins remain basically the same with respect to all the different organizations and nonprofits who serve individuals in low-income situations for food, shelter, housing, childcare, all the wonderful things that the city of Bloomington is, is regarded for with respect to, you know, the city's support for these agencies. And in the second round, however, we did put more of a focus on what would be the most useful as individuals in the community are reeling from COVID-related economic downturns, job losses, and so the need for food, the need for childcare, the need for housing, those kinds of things took priority in the second round. So as has already been stated, there were 25 organizations. Many of them are familiar organizations from the first round, but a few newer ones too, that came forward with excellent proposals. And we were delighted to be able to, to offer a second round of funding support for them. So I think our council attorney can put up the slide to let you see who were the organizations that benefited from the second round. I'm not necessarily going to read them or the specifics about them. But starting in alphabetical order, All Options Pregnancy Resource Center, Amethyst House, Big Brothers Big Sisters, Boys and Girls Club of Bloomington, Catholic Charities, Centerstone of Indiana, Courage to Change Sober Living, Habitat for Humanity of Monroe County, Health Net, Inc., Hotels for Homeless, Indiana Recovery Alliance, Life Designs, Bloomington Meals on Wheels, Middleway House, Monroe County Humane Association, Monroe County United Ministries, Mother Hubbard's Cupboard, New Hope Family Shelter, New Leaf New Life, Planned Parenthood of Indiana and Kentucky, The Refugee Support Network, Safe Families for Children in Bloomington, Shalom Community Center, Bloomington St. Vincent de Paul, and The Wheeler Mission. And again, many of these organizations are familiar to all of you that they're all doing yeoman's work in providing support to a number- that they're all doing yeoman's work in providing support to a number of individuals in our community who are certainly suffering more than they normally would be due to the COVID crisis in our community. So again, my thanks to the committee, my thanks to the hand staff under the direction of Doris Sims, who will be then monitoring all the proposals and how the allocations are going. And so, again, that's it. I'm happy to take any questions from the remainder of council if there are any.
All right. Thank you for the presentation, Councilmember Sandberg, and thank you for your work. We go now to questions from members. Are there any questions on Resolution 2017? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, thank you to all the committee members, and in particular to Councilmember Sandberg for chairing the committee this year. It's a tough year in many ways. But I wanted to ask, I noticed you had 35 applications in the second round of funding and 25 organizations that were funded. Can, can anyone on the committee, Ms. Sandberg, can you speak in general terms to some of the reasons why the other applications were not funded, not to name any particular agency, but just in general?
Absolutely. It's always a tough decision for any, you know, fund allocation committee, because when you have an amount that you're allocating, you want to try to make sure they hit your prime criteria. And this time, we did designate, as we sent out the call for the second round of applications, that we were primarily interested in helping with COVID relief. And so there was kind of a preference for the agencies that needed additional PPEs, either for the clients that they work with or for their agency, for the agency themselves, in order to be able to operate under this new COVID environment where, you know, a lot of the shelters have had to change how they do business for social distancing. And so that was going to be our focus. And so many of the organizations, while they had great proposals, they just were not necessarily in line with this second round criteria. And so we tended to go more for shelter opportunities, food provision opportunities, childcare kind of rose to the top of our concern. And again, all of our nonprofits in this community do absolutely phenomenal work. But when you only have $200,000 to allocate, you've got to start hitting your priority marks. And so some agencies just were not quite as in line as others with our second round criteria.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions on Resolution 2017? Second call. Seeing none, we'll go to the public for comment on Resolution 2017. If there's a member of the public who would like to address the resolution, please use the raised hand function in Zoom or type into the chat, and Mr. Lucas will recognize you. Is there anyone who would like to speak to Resolution 2017? Second call for public comment on Resolution 2017. Final call for public comment. And with that, we'll come back to the council for debate on Resolution 2017. Is there any final comment or perhaps follow-up questions? On it. Second call. I see that the Jack Hopkins Social Service Fund Committee has done such a thorough job that it's run the table. Councilmember Sims?
I won't let you get off that easy. I just simply wanted to say thank you. They did yeoman's work on two different occasions, and it's much needed. So just really want to offer my appreciation and thanks for all the input and all the committee members. So thank you very much.
I think they did yo-person's work myself, but well done to all. With that,
Did I miss? Oh, thank you for that correction.
No, 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 it's not a correction. I, it's a common term, and I just making fun of the English language. So with that, we'll go to a vote on Resolution 2017. Will the clerk please call the role?
Yes, Councilmember Volin.
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
And Sims?
Yes.
And with that, Resolution 2017 is adopted.